All right, we'll call our meeting to order tonight. It's my privilege to ask our local firemen. Mr. Frazier, if you'd come forward to our indication for us, please.
Let's pray. Father, we are grateful to be here together this afternoon or this evening, and we're reminded this time of year how thankful we should be every day of our lives. We acknowledge our dependence on you, and we humbly ask for your blessing, for your divine guidance and direction on council tonight as they conduct the business of our city. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you. You would please stand at this time, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Crouch?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Mr. McCrillis?
Here.
Mr. Clowson?
Here.
All right, at this time, we'll have recognition of one of our officers.
Our council women's services is here tonight.
Okay, you're going to go with that first? Okay?
Yes.
All right.
Well, hi. Thank you for putting us on the agenda this evening. My name is Bruce Arnold. I'm the executive director for Women's Services. And to my left is Dee Monholz. She's one of our legal advocates who works here in Titusville. With me tonight are some of my board members, Debbie, who's the coordinator of the office down here, and our legal advocate up in Meatville office. So, Women's Services has been providing services to victims of domestic and sexual violence for forty-five years. We got started in nineteen seventy-seven. And about ten years ago, we decided it would be worthwhile and prudent to acknowledge and reward and recognize those individuals who behaved in a way that furthered our vision to create communities without violence. And that means that we're treating people with respect and dignity. We're furthering the goals and the objectives that promote good community policing and advocacy and care. And so, every year when we think about, well, who would be worthy of this recognition? It was made very plain to me that we have a detective here in Titusville who embodies those values that we want to promote, with the theory being that you get more of what you focus on. And so, if we acknowledge those behaviors and those things that we think are worthwhile, we'll see more of that. And so, when we were considering, Detective Tim Russell came to the fore, and it was made very clear to me that this is somebody worthy of our recognition. Now, the award that we're giving Detective Russell was our Foster Torchlight Award. It was named for Doris Foster, who's one of the charter members, founding mothers of the organization. She's a lifelong educator, women's advocate, and social change agent, and really a truly dynamic person. And in some ways, Detective Russell embodies the best of what Doris Foster has been promoting throughout her entire lifetime. So, I'm going to turn this over to Dee, who's going to read the citation. And then we'll have Mr. Russell come on.
The citation is, "You make the difference." This is two thousand twenty-two Sheridan Unit Humanitarian Award, presented to Detective Timothy Russell by action of the staff and board directors for Women's Services Incorporated in recognition of your exceptional police work in partnership with the other officers, community organizations, and citizens in the city of Titusville, Pennsylvania. As a trusted and respected law enforcement officer who provides exceptional police services that promotes the safety, security, well-being of all city residents, you are being recognized for your uncompromised policy, honor, and ethics, and as someone who values the inherent worth, dignity, and rights of all persons. Thank you, Tim Russell. It almost makes me cry that you've been a very, very big part of our lives, and so has the Titusville Police Department. I can't thank you enough, Dustin, for all your cooperation.
I think she's trying to get a photo of the frame there. You might as well step in there, too, sir.
So, I have to make a reference. I refer to this as the Foster Award. We give two awards out every year. This is the Sheridan Award. Nancy was a board member, an outstanding board member, who worked for years at the Allen Needham College with special needs students, students who were struggling. And it was in that spirit that we thought Tim deserved this award, as somebody who really expressed humanitarian spirit.
Okay.
Thank you. So, in the minutes, please make sure it's the Sheridan Humanitarian Award, not the Foster.
This is the award itself. I'll let you give the order of that. I'm afraid I'll drop it. But it's beautiful.
Hold it up. Wow. Well deserved, Tim.
Yes.
So, and we, all the officers down here in Titusville are just terrific. We work with a lot of law enforcement throughout the county. We've always been very pleased with the way the officers conduct themselves. They're led, ably led by Dustin. And I'm sure we may be back in future years to award other officers as well.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. But this time, I'm just going to insert in our agenda tonight that acknowledge we have a new reporter tonight. And what's her first name? Beverly? Nice to meet you. And also, if you want to make a note for the newspaper to let people know that starting tonight, Luke is live streaming, correct? And it's on, what's the name of the Facebook page?
Stream TV.
Stream TV on Facebook. So, if anybody that's listening to it or wants to spread that word around, that's a very nice thing for the community. At this time, we'll have a swearing in of our newest police officer, Nathan Chikarow.
Nathan, if you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this commonwealth.
And that I will discharge.
And that I will discharge.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
The duties of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I would say Nathan is one of our officers who kind of grew up around here, right? You grew up right here in Titusville.
Absolutely, I did.
Glad to stay here. Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll move on to the approval of our previous meeting minutes. Everybody has received electronically. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept them as presented?
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Clowson?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. At this time, we'll have our approval of our operational reports. Starting with our manager report.
Yes, good evening, council. Just a few items this week on the manager report. First, providing a follow-up on the Diamond Street condemn property. We've talked numerous occasions about. Last week, our Public Works Department boarded up the Diamond Street property, which is one thirty-six through one forty, Diamond Street. Been working with our solicitor as we are trying to be very aggressive at addressing the issue. Obviously, that building's been condemned for about two years now. We had a local businessman that had taken over conservatorship of that building. And since, my understanding is, going to be ceasing conservatorship of that building. We've gotten to a point where that building is going to be quite expensive to put a roof on it. Obviously, half of that building is in the basement. And again, we're in a position to where we have made that building safe as far as windows have been starting to fall out of there. Again, and we've accumulated a bill of right around two thousand dollars for the work that's been done. The next step, I'll be working with the solicitor to send the correct notice of bill out to the owner, advising him of what the city has done, and obviously, the bill for that as well. And we'll be working on finding a name as well to go through that process. So, I just want to provide council with an update. We're out of that structure. Next, briefly, just want to talk a little bit about the Diamond Street progress. I know most of us have seen the progress that's moving quickly at the Diamond Street. The green space area is being developed. This week, my understanding is, weather permitting, they'll be putting that snape concrete in sidewalks. It's supposed to start on Wednesday. I believe the weather is supposed to be cooperative for that. So, you'll see that this week as well, sort of moving very quickly. No issues reported to council as far as progress being made or any other issues like that. So, again, hopefully, the next meeting, I'll be able to show some pictures and whatnot of progress that's being made. Church Run requests for proposal update. The city put out a Church Run request two weeks ago. We had received two. One had come in on time, another one is kind of up in limbo. It was sent UPS. The deadline was on my man. Looks like it was sent on Friday. We just got it today. So, we're trying to confirm that it just maybe was a mixed up through UPS. We just didn't get it in time. So, we potentially have two. We're working with the county on that to verify that as well. The next step is for a group of us to go through those RFPs. Again, if there's two, score the proposal that was given to the city and then come back for a vote from the city as far as accepting that bid. And that is for a study we don't on Church Run. Again, this is something that is going to be quite lengthy, but again, this is a starting point to come up with a plan to stop the flooding with Church Run. Again, we have numerous documents of Church Run for over the years of things that have been done, whether it be a IDAM or a box home service system. But again, we're looking to update that with a new engineer study as well, and move on to the next step. Again, I'll provide council with an update as we go through those potential two RFPs. Briefly, the two thousand twenty-two CDVG application was turned in last week by the county. Just a reminder to council, there were three items with our two thousand twenty-two CDVG. One was to replenish our two thousand twenty CDVG. Was right around a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That was, obviously, had been taken out of the Empire complex to supplement the green space on the Diamond Street, as council recalls. Again, that was about a hundred and ninety thousand. We also have developed a sidewalk program for the city. That'll be starting next year. We're working on those details on that program and what that would look like. A portion of that CDVG went to that. And then we also, as council recalls, as we've been talking in our budget meetings, twenty thousand dollars went to code enforcement to pay for salary to free up some money for the blighted property. Again, that's the two thousand twenty-two CDVG application. I don't anticipate any issues, as I think that'll flow through DCD and be approved. But I advise council as that moves on. Next, just to remind the public, our final public budget meeting, which is Monday, November seventh. We had several budget meetings open to the public. Unfortunately, we haven't had anybody show up from the public to kind of see where we get the numbers and how we come up with what we come up with. Again, I'm just encouraging the public. We have one more meeting left. If you'd like to hear where we're at with each department, budget line items, what have you, and what decisions will be made to move forward with the two thousand twenty-three budget. Again, it's Monday, November seventh at four o'clock at St. Paul. And lastly, just want to put a plug in for the community calendar. Tap into TitusvillePA.com. That has a listing of all the wonderful events that are happening in and around Titusville as we're ranking up into the holiday season with Thanksgiving and Christmas. Santa parade, hate to say, will be happening here in the next few weeks as we've reached that point of the year. So, we'll be getting that ready along with many of the other events that are happening in the city. With that, council, that concludes my manager report. Thank you.
I wonder, point five of our final budget meeting. I wonder if it would hurt anyone if we moved that meeting to Wednesday instead of Monday? If you could check and just get back to us.
I've already advertised it.
Yeah, we'd have to readvertise, but that way more people in council, people have conflicts that day, so. It'd be nice.
I'm not sure how council feels.
But you guys better do it on Wednesday? Okay, four o'clock, if we can. If we can't, we'll listen.
Okay, sounds good.
Any other questions, or would someone like to make a motion to accept the manager report as presented?
Make a motion to accept the manager's report.
I'll second that.
All right, if there's no more questions, call the roll, please.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Clowson?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. We also received electronically this week our minutes from the Benson Memorial Library. If someone would like to make a motion, accept them as presented.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Clowson?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. This week, we received from Heather, an updated council committee update. On the list we have here, we can probably move right along if everybody's gone over it and doesn't have any problems or questions with it in the interest of time and other things we have tonight. Everybody okay with that? All right, at this point, we open it to public participation. This part of our public participation is open to agenda items only. Five-minute time limit per individual speaker. If you want to speak, let us know whether you're a resident, non-resident, or what your ties are to the city, whether you're taxpayer, business owner, et cetera. Would anybody like to talk about agenda items before we proceed? Our agenda items, we have no old business tonight, or just two things. Approve of the talk about land development plans and discussion on EMS. Two very non-controversial issues. Okay, we'll move right into them. Neil, if you want to talk about the approval, to talk about land development. I'm sure Tim has some things to share with us.
Sure. Council has in front of them, or should have, received the recommendations from the Titusville Planning Commission conducted. They had conducted a review of the talk about land development application at their October twentieth meeting. The commission voted to recommend to council that they approve the plans contingent upon the following stipulations. My understanding is council should have seen, there's three items on there that was recommended. And just so council, we have some representatives from Charter Foods that's here for talk about. They'd be glad to update council on, or answer any questions I guess council would have on anything. One was the completion of the PENDO permitting process, which has been done. The addition of the bike racks to the plant, the exterior of the building, which has been approved, and the addition of full-laying shielding needed to protect the adjacent western and eastern lots, which is in them as well. So, if council has some questions or would like to hear from Charter Foods, they're here to represent.
Okay, well, before we have questions for them, anything you want to highlight from the email that you sent out? Tim?
Hey, just want to point out that the subdivision land development ordinance that the Titusville has in place permits you to approve preliminary plan without an advertised public hearing. This is preliminary plan, is my understanding. It sounds like a good recommendation from the planning commission is to have a conditional approval of that plan. From a process standpoint, should you approve that plan with those conditions, it would be sent back to skip the review. Who would send the information out to the developers? The developers would then revise their plans consistent with those conditions, resubmit it back to skip to make sure that it's complete, and then be submitted to the planning commission, which would have thirty days in which to review the final plan and then submit their recommendations back to council. For some reason, your ordinance requires an advertised public hearing prior to the approval of that particular document, which is over and above the minimum requirements of the municipal plan code. But nonetheless, that's what it is. So, we would have to have an advertised public hearing for the approval at that point.
Okay. So, because of the fact that the planning commission already made all the recommendations, that it is possible that we could vote on this tonight? And if so passed, that it could go back to planning? They could do their thing, and we could advertise and have that special meeting prior to our next meeting?
Yes, it is on your agenda for consideration this evening. Is preliminary plan would be proper for that to be voted on this evening, should council feel ready to do so?
But I'm saying that the rest of this stuff could move along for our meeting in two weeks so that they can get started.
They would not be able to move for two weeks.
That's facts.
No, because they're going to have to revise their plans to make sure that they meet those conditions. Those revised plans will have to come back to skip. It has to be submitted at least two weeks prior to the next planning commission meeting. The planning commission then would have thirty days to review that provided recommendation. And we would be unable to move forward until such time that we receive the recommendation from the planning commission. And in addition, we are required to advertise a public hearing.
Okay.
Prior to that. So, we'll need three, four days of business day notice prior to the meeting for the advertisement. So, unfortunately, the strictures of the municipal planning code do not allow us to move as quickly as we would like to.
So, there's absolutely nothing for us to do to get around that unless we just...
Correct. We are moving as quickly as the speed of government will allow us to move.
I'm saying, but if we just, if they already, I believe there's already been a letter sent back to skip saying they're going to incorporate all these...
Until such time that we receive recommendations back from the planning commission on their review of the final plan, we cannot act on it.
Okay.
And while I have criticisms of your subdivision land development ordinance and the manner which it's drafted, that is not...
We can't fix that, then?
We can't fix that. That is a state code issue that we have to deal with.
Okay.
Now, does that mean the demolition will not take place?
We'd have to talk to skip about the issuance of the demolition permit. If that's all tied in or not. I'm not as familiar with the day-to-day pieces of that plan.
Okay. Do you guys know anything about that? About the demolition permit, et cetera?
We're planning to demo the twenty-first around that timeframe.
So, you already have permits for that?
That was planned as we...
Okay. We wish you success. Anybody else have any questions for them?
So, we are approving this. We're going to vote to approve or disapprove of the recommendations from...
The vote is for approval of the preliminary plan as submitted with the conditions submitted by the planning commission. You don't have to agree with the conditions from the planning commission, but we do have to take action one way or the other.
Right. And I guess I would ask if you guys could answer this question. Do any of the recommendations recommended to you, I don't think these require, this are recommendations from our planning commission, do they cause any kind of undue issue with your development of this property?
No.
Okay. They're pretty simple as far as the public, if the public, I guess you're stating them, so. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve this preliminary plan?
With the conditions.
With the conditions presented to us from the planning commission. Correct?
Okay, I'll make the motion to accept with the conditions.
I will second that.
All right. If there's no further questions, we'll call the roll, please.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Clowson?
Yes.
Mr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Yes. Thank you for coming, and thank you for developing in Titusville.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Neil, when does the planning commission meet? When's our next regular scheduled meeting? They were planning to meet on the fifteenth. So, they could still meet on the fifteenth, and then it would be the next meeting before we do something, is that... Or do they have to meet at their scheduled meeting?
No.
The plan was for them to meet prior to...
I know what the plan was, but we're saying that the plan can't happen.
Well, can it? Once they meet, then we have to wait after they meet to have a...
They have thirty days to provide recommendations. If they want to do it in three days, they can.
Yes.
Once we receive those recommendations, schedule a public hearing for whenever you'd like to do it. Doesn't have to be at a regular meeting, it could be at a special.
Right.
We can schedule it as quickly as we know that we have the necessary documents in front of us in order to schedule and move forward. We do not have to wait for the next meeting.
And you guys will stay and be on top of it?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Okay, thanks for the clarification, and I guess that's it for the agenda tonight. Oh, wait.
Nope.
I'm just kidding. So, tonight, we have before us discussion on EMS. If you'd like to start that out, Neil?
Yeah, council, this topic was put on the agenda for discussion as we're at a point with emergency medical service EMS, not just here in Titusville, but everywhere, at risk that some folks are waiting for anywhere up to an hour for ambulance to show up, not just here in Titusville. It's all over, issues such as staffing issues with the ambulance service, insurance companies not paying the ambulance services. We have Dave Bazneck here from Emergency Care, president and executive director. He will certainly speak about the challenges that emergency care faces. Specifically, here in Titusville, we are seeing an increase in number of times where an ambulance just isn't available. We are waiting for volunteer services. We do have a representative here from Tynesta, Townsville. That can certainly, if he chooses, speak on how many times he comes to Titusville. Again, this isn't a meeting to say emergency care's, put it all on emergency care. This is an issue that has just increasingly gotten worse over the years. Numbers have increased. And again, this is a topic that's been discussed. In fact, I think they had a meeting last night over near Meatville, where it's been discussed with the issues that they face over there, issues arising from where talent shops are being told to raise a half mil tax increase to supplement the EMS. That's been brought about. We have a state representative here as well, Lee James, is here out of Van Hango County, who potentially could be in charge of the Titusville area in the new year. Needs here to provide insight of what their state legislature-wise, what they are discussing on the EMS matter. Sorry, Dave, we're toneless. But anyhow, this has become an increasing issue and challenge. Not only does the city face, but emergency care faces as well. Again, the numbers have increased to where our fire department, who is on scene and who work twenty-four, seven, around the clock to respond to a lot of these medical emergencies are there from anywhere from five minutes to an hour waiting on an ambulance to come out of Frank Lloyd City, out of Townsville, out of Tynesta, out of Swartsburg. It's no secret, a lot of volunteer services are lacking volunteers. We're waiting for them. Sometimes, certainly, when an ambulance is called, it's not a bad rush to get you to the hospital, but in some cases it is. In some cases, there's quite a delay in getting there. It's frustrating when our fire department is blocked from the hospital and can see the Titusville Hospital sign, but can't get the patient there. Again, it's an issue that we're facing. It's increasingly gotten worse. Again, you're going to hear from Dave, who will talk about staff shortages and what the challenges that he faces. Again, it's an issue that we face, and it needs to be brought to the public and to council as well, as we've had some initial conversations about it. There's no great answer to how do you solve this? Again, so I think it's important that council hears from every side of the challenges that we all face. With that, I'd like Dave...
Well, before you do that, I would just like to say, and open up the council, too, from council's behalf as the legislative body, that we have discussed this for a while, but certainly discussed it at two or three of our budget meetings and work sessions. And one of the things that kept coming to me, and I think I brought up to you today, and I was talking to the chief on the way in there today. You know, I look at, we always talk about the three basics. People turn on the water, and they got clean water. They flush their toilet, and it goes away. They put their garbage out, and it gets picked up. Those are things that people think about. But we can have the best fire department, and we can have the best police department. But if somebody responds to a call, and it's a life or death matter, and an ambulance is not available, like you said, when, like, I live a little over a block away from the hospital, it just so happened when a family member needed it, that an ambulance was here. But we would have had to wait. A crucial moment could have turned into a very critical moment if we would have had to wait on an ambulance. So, personally, I see it as one of the basic needs for the safety of the people of this community. Anyone else want to share before we have them come up?
I think it's very important that we take care of our citizens in this town. We do that in the way that we've always been known to, the police department, the fire department. I just think it's a darn shame if somebody has a heart attack or a broken leg, you can't get an ambulance. They're out of town for some reason, transports and whatever. But the citizens of Titusville and in our area, they need coverage on an ambulance somehow, somewhere, and that's what we're here to find out, if we can work something out or we can have coverage. Thank you.
Anyone else? You're good? Okay?
Dave, if you'd like to...
Everybody have a copy of the information that I provided? You must look very good. So, Neil said, I'm Dave Bazneck. I am the President and Executive Director of Emergency Care. I'm also a paramedic by trade. I started up and worked my way up through the ranks and so I knew exactly what you're talking about. When you talk about taking care of the community, all of us that have got into this line of work, that's really why we got into it. And so I've been at this now for 21 years and I'm actually one of the more younger individuals that's going around and talking about this issue, like Commissioner Henry, who also owns Meadville Ambulance, he's been doing it for a great deal longer than myself and I'm many of the other service directors. So, yeah, so as Neil said, this is a, not just a Titusville problem, not just a Crawford County problem, but this is certainly a nationwide problem that we're facing right now. So essentially, emergency medical services has relied on funding through what we call pay-for-service. In other words, when the ambulance goes out and transports the patient to the hospital, that's how we're paid for service. And historically, you know, 20 years ago, that payment model worked because insurance reimbursement was a lot better then. You know, obviously there wasn't like the inflationary pressures that there are today. You know, anything that you can point out to the economy is going to play a role in that in terms of what we, that impacts what we like to call payer mix, and that's the type of insurance that's paying us for service. So really, I'll break down, EMS is pretty simple. You could really break our expenses down into two categories. There's the first category, which is what's called the cost of readiness, and the second category is called, or is, fits into when we actually provide service. So cost of readiness is that cost of having that EMS asset there sitting and waiting for a call. Currently, right now, in our system, we don't receive any compensation or any, anything to cover the cost of that. And that's really what the downfall's been all these years, is that that, the part of that cost has not been covered. Service provided, we rely, like I said, on primarily insurance reimbursement in order to cover the expense of the, of the service we do provide. So our biggest payers that we see, and so this payer mix is specific to, and when I say payer mix, these are the insurances of the calls that we run in Titusville. Breaks down to Medicare is half of what we bill. Medicaid is about a quarter, or 16% non-billable, which means that it's a service that is not billable by insurance standards. It doesn't mean, like if we go to a fire standby, for example, there's nobody that's paying that expense. You know, we're canceled in route somewhere, something like that. Private pay, which is usually an individual who doesn't, not have insurance, or they did, the insurance, what they call this for, does not meet the definition of what insurance will pay for. And commercial insurance, which comes in at 9.8%, commercial insurance is really the only insurance that we see that ever, that actually covers the cost of providing service. So.
You're talking about people's private insurance?
Correct. You know, like if you have like a UPMC, a high mark, you know, through your employer, that's, that's, that's commercial insurance.
Thank you.
Yep.
I can ask, just the Medicare, Medicaid.
Yep.
What's, they're not reimbursing anything for?
So they do, so Medicaid covers about 44% of the cost of the service that's provided, and Medicare covers about 65% of the cost provided. In fact, I think I have that broke down there specifically in one of the paragraphs there. So Medicaid, they just increased Medicaid. So Medicare, the rates are set by the federal government, Medicare federal. Even though federal dollars trickle down through the Medicaid program, it's the state level that administers the Medicaid program. And so they're doing a Medicaid increase, which is one of the larger in the history, and it still will not bring it up beyond, you know, it'll come past maybe potentially 50% of covering the cost of providing service. It's still a shortfall, but it's better than it is. But right now, it's significantly less in terms of reimbursement. It's, so Medicaid is actually the worst payer, insurance payer out there. And so when you see, when you add up Medicare, Medicaid, non-billable and private pay, that makes up 90% of the payer mix of what we see when we respond to emergencies. So as an organization, so Emergency Care, we're 501(c)(3). We do not receive, you know, Titusville dollars for providing 911 services, and you're trying to only make it off of what you're getting for pay-for-service. That's where it becomes very difficult for us to cover the expense of service. So like I said, that's where the service provided. That does not cover the cost of readiness, because you have to remember is when you have a crew sitting there waiting for an emergency, it's, it's costing money, right? There's an hourly, hourly wage, you know, you're paying for insurance, you have all of those expenses, depreciation on the equipment, you know, it has to be there, but at that point, it's not covering its expense of them. And there's nothing additional coming in the door that's helping to cover that. And I even cover it here too, so we also, you know, we do a membership drive, which brings in about $35,000, but what I can, and that's in this area here, but I'll tell you, one of the barriers to that is that if you understand how the membership program works, we're writing off out-of-pocket costs when somebody has a membership. So it's not necessarily to where it's like $35,000 that adds to our bottom line. If somebody uses the ambulance and we're writing off out-of-pocket costs, that's going against that $35,000. In fact, membership programs, and even Eric Henry can attest to, he just made some changes in his membership program because right now, membership programs are not really actuarially sound, which means that we're writing off more than what the membership programs actually bring in. So we're writing off more than that $35,000 that it's bringing in, so it's actually costing us more money by having a membership program, which is going to cause us to have to look at that and make some changes here in the future. So on top of that, so this, the situation with EMS has been compiling in time. For as long as I've been in it, this discussion's been going on. A lot of people want to point to the pandemic and COVID and blame that it's COVID that did this. I'll be very frank with you, this has been coming down the path for a long time. COVID just put it in overdrive, because you know, in this post-COVID world, we're seeing all these inflationary pressures and we're not seeing our reimbursement increase along with what we're seeing with inflation. I mean, a gallon of diesel fuel is almost, is doubled in price in the last year and a half here. Ambulances, the cost of an ambulance has gone up by 30%. Our stretchers that we used to pay $13,000 for, and mind you, we're getting ready to have to outfit our entire fleet again with new stretchers, what was $13,000 is now $27,000. All right, and so I listed a couple of examples of those expenses in that packet I provided. And so really, the big thing that's crippling us now, and what I can say is that we are, in terms of the positions that we have in Titusville, Titusville's actually been one of our better staff divisions for what we can afford to keep them here. And I'll be very honest and open and transparent is that we have not covered our expenses in Titusville for a great many of years. In fact, at one point, we were losing over half a million dollars, meaning that we were not covering half a million dollars of our expenses providing service in Titusville. And so we get asked all the time, well, how is that that you can do that and you're still there, why you don't leave? Well, number one, it's not in our mission to just go and leave a community. Number two, because of the size of our organization, we cover parts of seven counties. You know, system-wide, we run 65, 60 to 65,000 patient requests a year. So sometimes, some of our other divisions are able to help toe the line for the other divisions that are losing. And unfortunately, at this point, because of inflation, the cost of labor and the increases we've had to make, nowhere is, is covering expense right now. In fact, we did a payroll increase this past July in order to try to make a dent in recruitment retention, which is slowly starting to work, but we're going to need to do more, we're going to need to do better, to where we had to increase our wages, just like every other business has had to do. What's different in our world though, is, is that I can, I can bump up how much I charge for a request for ambulance service to the insurance company, but do you think they pay us more? No, it's a negotiated rate with the insurance companies. And really, us as ambulance services are small fish in a very big pond. We do not have the power to influence and increase insurance rates, reimbursement rates. And like I said, most of what you're seeing that we bill that reimburses us for services is a government payer of one sort or another. It's federal or it's Medicaid. And then, and think about, who are the people that have Medicare and Medicaid? And even people who are self-paid, who can't afford insurance. Those are really the most vulnerable citizens that you have in the community. And that's the way it is everywhere, because that's who's utilizing EMS. It's typically not individuals that are healthy, that, you know, have that commercial insurance, you know, and as much as you don't want to make it about dollars and cents, at the end of the day, that's the only way that you provide service, you know, that's the only way that you have, you know, a paid police department, a paid fire department, you know. We are in the same boat. It's just that up to this point, we've been able to make it work with insurance reimbursement, but unfortunately, it's just not keeping up with, with the cost of the service that's provided. And like I said, what it really comes down to is that cost of readiness has been uncovered for a long time. And now trying to recruit and bring new individuals into emergency medical services is a huge challenge. I mean, volunteer departments are struggling to be able to get out the door and respond because, you know, it's, it's tough. People are working multiple jobs. There's multiple factors for that. I mean, we're struggling getting people to make a career of it. And what's tough is like you can see like an EMT, you know, starting at $17 an hour, and you can see the pay jump that we did here this past July from where we started to where we're at. The thing is, is that you can go up here to the sheets and there's probably a sign on the door that says, you know, starting pay is probably 16, 17 bucks an hour. You know, you can go to work at Target, Erie, that's the, you know, one of the examples I like to use is Target's starting employees around $20 an hour. So if you are a young individual that's coming out of school and you're like, I need, you know, I want a job, I want a career path, which one are you going to pick? Do you want to go work at Target for 20 bucks an hour, work in the air conditioning, or you know, work at the sheets where, you know, not saying that the job's not difficult, where you want to come be an EMT and then go on to be a paramedic and then go into people's houses, work long shifts, you know, carry people down three flights of steps? You know, it's very tough for us to compete to try to attract people to our line of work, you know. So that's really where the recruitment retention is. And again, and so the advantage I have, so a lot of agencies have been getting beat up about this lately because they're for-profit. The reality is, is that whether you're for-profit, whether you're nonprofit, it's, it's all the same. Our reimbursement's all the same. It's not covering the cost of providing service.
What makes, what makes you not-for-profit in this business?
In this business is, we don't have, I mean, there's nobody that owns Emergency Care. We're governed by our board of directors. That's who I report to. And we have community representation on that board of directors that, you know, directs our organization. You know, the profit that, you know, anything that we would end up in the black at the end of the year gets reinvested back in our organization. That's how we keep our vehicle lives, you know, between six and seven years, which is the industry standard. You know, we reinvest in the equipment in our organization, like we have an entire communication center that has a CAD system. In fact, the statistics I shared about Titusville specifically is actually out of our CAD system about the calls that we run in Titusville. It allows us to tease all those, that information out, but yeah, we, we put it back into technology, you know, equipment, you know, and again, this, this stuff's all expensive, like a cardiac monitor that we have on each one of our ambulances, that's 30, $35,000. That's what we paid for pre-pandemic. I don't even want to look at them yet. But, you know, all of those, again, you know, inflationary pressures have certainly helped us. Medicare, we are supposed to get, to give you a little idea how this works with the game with these insurances, is so Medicare came out and said, so every year they reevaluate the rate that they pay, reimburse for ambulance services, and they came out with one of the highest that they have in years, and so it's 8.7%, which still doesn't cover what the, what inflation has done, but it helps. But here's the thing, is that there's this thing called sequestration to where they're going to put another 2% sequestration in at the first of the year. So actually, so Medicare's, we're giving you 8.7%, but then on this other part, we're going to take 2% off of that. And so then, there's this other component called PEGO, and so that's where they will evaluate if the Medicare system has been, depending on how much Medicare has been used. So in other words, the pot of money for Medicare, if it's been overutilized or it's been drawn too much out, they will have to take some of that money back. And how they balance their budget out is they will take another percentage off of what they're going to reimburse. So even though it's 8.7% today, worst-case scenario is after the first of the year, we could be looking at maybe only a 2% increase. So when you look at the CPI, when I looked at it yesterday, you know, is over 8% compared to where we were a year ago, and prices were inflated a year ago, and, you know, whatever they were, you know, it just, it piles on. And so that's the problem, is that when our reimbursement, you know, you see these games of how it gets juggled around, that's the struggle. And so, and the other thing I'd like to point out too, is that, you know, we get a lot of feedback on that we take non-emergency trips. Well, the reality is, is that people who need to go by stretcher to another location, to a higher level of care, there's a lot of times that those trips that are going to Erie, going to Pittsburgh, there's a lot of times that those patients are higher acuity than some of the 911 calls that we run. In fact, when I really break down from Crawford County data, there's a great fraction of calls in Titusville and the surrounding community that are what we call alpha responses, which are like the lowest priority of calls. And so the problem is, is that when somebody calls 911, we have to respond if we're available. And the other thing is, is if they want to go to the hospital by ambulance, we have to take them. So even if we arrive on scene, or the fire department arrives on scene and it's a, somebody with a stuffed tub, and like that might sound silly, but those are realistic type calls that we do go on and we do get tied up on. But you get there, it's a low-acuity call to where you're like, anybody would be, you know, anybody reasonably would be like, this does not merit an ambulance response. If that person demands to go to the hospital by ambulance, we have to take them. But the other side of that is, is that if it is one of those low-acuity complaints, there's a lot of times that insurance will, will not pay us for those trips. In fact, they tell us, do not even try billing us for those trips. So there's a lot of those, so when you see that 7% like private pay, a lot of those trips fall into that category is because their insurance says that it's not medically necessary that somebody goes to the hospital. The law says we have to take them, but the law, but then when you look at the rules of insurance, insurance is like, well, don't bill us for that, you go after the patient for that. So then the patient gets a bill. And so, as if somebody paying their bill, very slim enough. It's, it's very difficult when somebody to recoup anything from the private pay aspect of it. The other thing too, is if you ever look at your explanation of benefits, we have what's called contractual with all of the insurances. It's just like, you know, with your hospitals, you know, like you'll see like X amount of dollars is charged, and we can only recoup what the billable rate is. And so our contractual is, is we typically, on average, between all of our payers, have to write off about 51% of what we bill. So even though you see on that bill, like there's a big number that we're trying to go after and recoup, we only get to bill about 51% of that, and then some of that still might be patient responsibility, which means that we have to depend on that the patient is going to cover X amount of dollars of what they would still owe under deductible and so on and so forth. So this is a very long-winded crash course on what, how are we in this situation right now? Because I would love to absolutely increase the coverage that we have in Titusville here and be able to put on a second ambulance 24 hours a day. But right now, last, in the last fiscal year, we'd lost over $160,000 with our current staffing model. And that's with having one ambulance on 24 hours a day and a second ambulance on during the daylight hours, eight hours, Monday through Friday. And we're still losing money. And the problem is, is we don't have other ways to be able to go after, to cover our loss. You know, we don't have the ability to raise taxes. We can't do an assessment, which is why you see Eric Henry going around and talking to his municipalities about the half mil property tax, because right now, by, on the books, the only law that's out there that you can really engage or ability to raise funds for EMS as a municipality, is that half mil tax that can go directly to EMS. Or LST money, you're able to use that. Anything beyond that half mil is something that has to be passed, you know, decided on at the council level here, at the local municipality level. And so why does all of this fall onto you is the municipality? So because Pennsylvania, Commonwealth, you know, the lowest form of government really has the highest power over the municipality. The municipal code for, in Pennsylvania is essentially that the lowest form of government is responsible for it, which makes the city, surrounding townships, surrounding municipalities, that's why everybody's all in this boat, because there's not one solution together. And so the provision of emergency services, and so I'll just read this, this is on the last page of your packet, emergency services, provision of emergency services, a city shall be responsible for ensuring that fire and emergency medical services are provided within the city by the means and to the extent determined by the city, including the appropriate financial and administrative assistance for these services. The city shall consult with fire and emergency medical service providers to discuss emergency service needs of the city, and the city shall require any emergency services providers receiving city money to provide an annual itemized listing of expenditures of city money before the city may consider budgeting additional funding to the provider. So the good part about this is, is that there's golden transparency that's in here. So you understand how any of those kind of funds would be utilized. But it puts, the law puts the responsibility of this onto the local municipality to ensure that it's provided and provide any financial support to ensuring that services. to ensure that it's provided and provide any financial support to ensuring that services are provided. So just to give you an idea, so in Titusville, our Titusville division for twenty-four seven coverage of one ambulance, so one ambulance twenty-four seven, cost us about nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. And so what you have to remember, what all goes into that calculation is, is not only the equipment, the personnel, wages, insurance, benefits, time off, because you remember, you know, if your folks have time off, you're having to cover that shift typically with overtime, stuff like that. Same thing that you see police department, fire department, because you have to keep those holes plugged. Um, expenses when it comes to, you know, supplies that you're going to use on calls and stuff, that's a, a year snapshot of what that looks like. And with next year, and that is without like our pay increase of what we've done to recruit and try to retain individuals in EMS. I expect that to be over a million dollars next year. You know, just applying our formula for what we increased wages, it's going to be over a million dollars. And so with this, you know, sort of a truck and a quarter that we provide Titusville on a regular basis, that comes out to be, uh, one point one million dollars. And so when we recoup that, when I calculate what we recoup out of that, that's where we still have that deficit, even with that model, the way it is, and again, we're offsetting a lot of those expenses by taking some of those additional trips. And like I said, a lot of those people are sick. If you have a neck fracture and you're in Titusville, you need to get to a trauma hospital. You're not going to go by car for that. If you're having a heart attack, you need to get, be able to get to meet them. You need to be able to get to Erie, Pittsburgh. You know, you need to see a specialist for some, you know, significant procedure, like they still have to go by ambulance. And so, you know, that's the challenge of how you do that. And so, I mean, the real challenge is, is trying to find that, that perfect balance of how do you make sure that there's coverage to ensure that the citizens are covered when somebody calls nine-one-one, that, you know, help is coming? And what's the balance of it when somebody needs to go to a higher level of care to ensure that they can receive that care? You know, so I've hit you with a lot of information. And unfortunately, I have this talk probably about twelve times a week with twelve different people because this is a hot button issue and everywhere. If you look at some of the news headlines just this past week, and ambulance services closing up in Clarion County, you know, they're no longer solvent, they no longer have the staff. And there's a lot more of those that are happening. If you just Google ambulance closures Pennsylvania, you'll see that, you know, almost every week we're seeing additional services, you know. Um, a lot of volunteer agencies and paid career services that can no longer keep their doors open. So that's what, that's why you see all the discussions and going on, and that's why this, there's not a good, there's not a good answer for this. And I'm sorry, I should have hit on the call volume. So when I look at the Titusville city call volume, um, my goal was to use the county numbers so that way I could give you the independent numbers from the county. But the county actually shows that we have a hundred and seventy-five less calls in the city of Titusville. Um, I show six hundred and twenty-five calls and I'm talking just Titusville proper. Breaks down the types of responses and, uh, I know that all of these calls exist because I have patient care reports that show evidence of these calls. So I'm working with the county because I would like to get, find out why their statistics about what we run in the city of Titusville does not meet, does, isn't what's in our CAD. I mean, I know our CAD, our CAD information to be accurate. So when I look at what the average reimbursement is for a call in, in Titusville and actually the surrounding community, it takes about twenty-seven paying emergencies, insurance reimbursed emergencies to cover that one ambulance twenty-four seven. Twenty-seven hundred calls.
Twenty-seven, okay.
Yeah, twenty, yeah, twenty-seven hundred calls of just emergencies. And so that's where.
We have six hundred and twenty-five.
What's that?
We have six hundred and twenty-five.
Yeah, just, just in Titusville Crawford, so.
Six hundred and twenty-five that you responded to.
That we responded to, yes. And so then there's the outside municipalities, the outside townships and stuff that we, and again, this is not just a Titusville city problem. This is really to where we should really engage and have a hold of municipalities. Like last night, you know, French Creek clock, you know, we went and spoke over there to go over this because really it's going to be a joint, it has to be a joint solution, you know, to a certain degree, coordination amongst neighbors and stuff. Uh, but, uh, you know, the reality is, is that insurance alone, insurance reimbursement alone is no longer going to cover the expense of this and it's only going to get worse. So, um, we've really plugged, uh, very hard with our legislators, uh, both federally and on the state level, you know, trying to find a more global solution, you know, the half mil sales tax, I'm sorry, not the sales tax, but property tax. I, I absolutely hate taxes just like everybody else. I do not believe that that's, I'm not a fan of that solution personally. However, when you look at the toolbox of what we have to really draw from, that's, that's really all that's on the books is tax money. Um, what we did discuss last night and I'm a fan of is seeing the state go to funding EMS and fire, very similar to how they fund nine-one-one centers, which is just a charge on people's cell phone bills, you know, a couple dollar charge. Um, because really the, when you're looking at property taxes, you know, and, you know, generating revenue as a municipality, when you have non-taxable properties, you know, they're going to be excluded from that, you know. It's not like providing an assessment. Uh, there was Senate Bill six ninety-eight that was out there that would allow for a county level public safety authority that would allow, you know, for like assessments, so then that way you could be inclusive of everybody and every organization out there. So everybody is paying their fair share. That for the second, uh, round here has died. It's going to die at the end of the term here. Um, it didn't make it out because their, the PSATs actually opposed it, which was very interesting because they felt that that giving, uh, counties more power that it's taking power away from them and it's giving more power to the county, which it's like, okay, so what's the next best tool in the toolbox then? Because, you know, the problem is not being solved.
For the layperson out there, what's the PSAT? What is that?
Uh, that's the township supervisor. Yeah, the township supervisors and municipality leadership.
Okay.
Organization, the loving group essentially for the state. So, um, another, I mean, another idea that's been thrown around out there is a one percent, you know, or an up to one percent sales tax. The only thing that's on the books that that can be used for right now is distressed pension funds, you know, in the state that, that can be engaged. And again, all that stuff would have to be, you know, that would require legislative motion in Harrisburg. You know, the concern is anything going through Harrisburg is going to meet special interests. Like what I worry about is, you know, if they try to put in a sales tax, is what else could get tapped on to that that they, they take from it later? You know, because there's always that possibility, you know, so. Again, you know, really in, in my world, it's not, you know, my job is to provide the service and, and, you know, try to throw ideas and stuff out there and look at models and try to collectively come up with a solution. Um, the problem is, is that the tools that are in all of our toolboxes to solve this financial issue is, it's, it's really non-existent.
How many ambulances does emergicare run?
So we have thirty-nine vehicles total. Here in Warren Station, we keep four vehicles. Uh, and like I said, we have one truck on that's twenty-four seven and then one truck on that's Monday through Friday, uh, eight hours a day.
So is it nine hundred and forty thousand dollars per ambulance generally?
Four, so that's.
Thirty-eight million dollar organization.
So that is a manned ambulance twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So thirty-nine ambulances is the number of vehicles that we have system wide.
How many do you man in front?
So in Titusville, one, oh, system wide. So typically in Erie or anywhere from six ambulances to fourteen, depending on what we can do staffing wise. Out of the Warren Station, we run two twenty-four hour trucks out of there and a day turn truck at that location. Uh, we talked about Titusville already. Came, one twenty-four hour vehicle came.
So I, I lost track of the numbers. So ten, fifteen?
I'd say, I mean, twenty, average of twenty during the day. At nighttime it's less.
So then you run it at about eighteen million dollar?
It's about a twenty million dollar budget. Yep.
Uh, I have other questions.
Yes, sir.
Um, in nineteen, you guys were unavailable for two hundred and five, out of service two hundred and five times. Up to twenty-one, you're over nine sixty-six and this year you're on track to go to a thousand. We're talking, you know, almost a five hundred percent increase in three years of out of service. And you're still selling memberships and your average out of service is four hours.
So the statistics that you have for the missed calls, where does that come from?
It's not missed calls. This is when you're logged out of service and this is out of my model.
Okay, so out of service, so not missed calls, so out of service.
These are out of service where you're not available. Um, so basically you're asking for five mil increase, but I'm seeing a decline in services.
So it's, it's a half a mil and I'm not here asking for anything. I'm here educating you on the problem tonight because I want to try to come to an amicable solution so that we can improve the coverage in Titusville.
Okay, so why is there such an increase of being out of service?
I mean, could be call volume, the one, I mean, because remember we also go out of service too when we're handling calls in other areas. So as call volume rises, that is going to increase time. Because what I can tell you is we're seeing a decrease in our non-emergency transport since COVID. Those statistically, those trips have not returned to normal. And also, I believe it was in eighteen is when we made a staffing model change because we used to have one twenty-four hour truck and one truck that was on sixteen hours a day. And we had to back that sixteen hour truck back to eighteen, or I'm sorry, back to eight hours because we were losing almost half a million dollars in just the, out of the Titusville location alone.
Okay, so one of these people that are buying this membership and that one thousand times that you're out of service a year, they're buying this membership and that you get called an ambulance, another company is going to come and bill them for that. Is that right?
You mean, you're saying if I buy a membership from emergicare and Town Bill has to come and get me, I'm, I'm going to get billed full for my, for my insurances or whatever. That was, actually that was one of my questions too. And, and would you say you guys take, sometimes you take the additional, you're taking these additional trips so that you can meet your own budget? And so if, if, tonight if you're here to help us find solutions, we've been discussing this for quite a while. Um, it's one thing for us to sit here and hear all the stuff you're saying, which is all good. But from our citizens of our community standpoint, um, they're trying to understand where, because we're considering doing something ourselves, because we already have our fire department that responds and is there in less than five minutes, but they're handicapped and they can't do anything except sit there waiting for an ambulance. Um, and so if, if we're working collaboratively, what's your answer to our citizens for a solution?
Well, we've talked about different models and what that would look like. You know, I presented Neil some information that, you know, if we put up each half person, what that expense would look like. Um, you know, what it'll look like? So off the top of my head, it, because the one thing that we would have to make sure that we're covering is the current loss with the current staffing model, which is going to be around a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And so that additional person to cover the additional hours, which was an extra two hundred and change hours a week, man hour or unit hours a week was around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover that.
So back to the Pennsylvania state law, I mean, where we're looking at this from the legislative body, the council here is, we have an obligation to provide an emergency service. And it's become embarrassing to us when we hear from people that have memberships that their membership means that they have a wonderful, not the knock, but, but they have a wonderful charming fire department to sit with them while they're waiting for Town Bill or Tynester or whoever to come. Because their, their local services stop on.
So how many times does that really happen compared to how many calls we do take?
Uh, can somebody shoot the statistics on that? Somebody, do you have any of it with the audience?
One's too many.
Quite a bit. What, what were you going to say, sir?
I was going to say, um, I actually, from July first, we ran twenty-five calls in the city. And I got no idea what some of those run. So, and I, and I understand where Dave's coming from.
Yes.
But that's what we have. We looked it up the night before I came down.
Okay, so at this point, what have you contributed to, to us to be able to help that?
That's, that's kind of a loaded question. What do you, what do you, what do you get?
I mean financially, what has Titusville's contribution been to emergicare to try to improve that coverage? Because I've never come and asked you for a dollar, you know. That's what, if you're going to get into the ambulance business, I'll certainly help you with that. But I'm going to tell you, it's going to be very expensive. You're going to be going through the same challenges that we are and trying to come to a solution with this. It's very expensive to do.
Unless, unless we're able to accomplish this with people that are multifaceted, that they can do more than just ambulance.
Sure, but I mean, the problem is, is that how are you going to recruit? How are you going to retain those individuals? You know, there's a lot, there's a lot of challenges to this. A lot of expenses to this, um, you know, are you going to employ paramedics? Because if it's going to dig into our call volume, that's offsetting our expenses. That's going to be more calls that you're running. Uh, and you have to remember too, that truck's going to have to leave Titusville because part of the EMS Act is that if you are called to a call regardless of where that's at, you have to send that vehicle. And that's another challenge that we have is when we have, you know, they take calls outside.
Let me stop you just for a second.
Sure.
So I had to wrap my head around your statement. If, if we had our own ambulance and we get a call from Pittsburgh, we got to go?
Technically, by letter of law, yes.
Well, I would think there's probably going to be an invasion to that.
Nope, uh, you can review the EMS Act and if you're.
Because that's what it sounds like. Huh?
I have a question. So, um, so you're talking about, you know, the, the loss per year from, from running the ambulance in Titusville. So do, do you see the similar losses in the other communities that, that you're in or do?
We do now. And so that's why I said that we really haven't had this discussion in the past because we've been able, we've been able to offset the losses in Titusville through other divisions, but now.
And so, so what's it, what is, uh, what's making it so that the other communities are more viable? Is it less Medicare and Medicaid and more paid provider? Is it, is it, um, more, um, participation from the municipality? Like what, what is offsetting other places?
Pay or mix in volume, pay or volume rate. And out here, you, you do spend a lot of time on task, especially when you get south, outside of the city proper. You know, sometimes it could be a call, you know, if you have a patient that goes to say like UPMC Northwest or Amiibo Medical Center, you know, that's two hours of out of service time that, you know, that that unit's tied up on that, you know, on that emergency. And, uh, you know, behavioral health calls, that's another challenging one because, you know, they need to go to, you know, Amiibo or Northwest, um, you know, for treatment. So you're taking them there, which is going to increase out of service times and all of that, so.
Well, how many of these out of, out of service times are because you're taking personnel out of Titusville and staffing other stations like Warren?
No, we don't. So typically the outer divisions, we're robbing from our Erie division to cover outer divisions down.
So you're not taking people out of Titusville to go to Warren?
Not on a regular basis, no.
But if, if, well, you're sent to Neil, so let's just, for sake of argument, throw some figures out there. Let's say you're saying if you got a contribution from the city Titusville for three, four hundred thousand, what is it you're looking for?
I mean, to get together, that's going to help bridge that gap of what it's going to cost to provide the service and.
To provide, I'm saying to provide a guarantee that there's going to be an ambulance here twenty-four seven?
So what that does, so what those figures do, that adds in ambulance, the additional sixteen hours Monday through Friday that currently does not have coverage, and it also adds a twenty-four hour truck on Saturday and on Sunday.
Dedicated to Titusville?
Yeah, it, it's an emergen- it's, it would be for emergency.
And they, so they wouldn't be doing transports when, you know.
No, no, that's, that's where, that, that's why that number is so expensive is because it's basically covering the cost of readiness that, you know, is not going to be covered by additional trips.
But that cost doesn't include what it's going to cost the city to have another department to work with that.
Oh, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute. That's right. With this, they're asking for us to supply a person.
That's correct.
So that could be another couple hundred thousand by the time you outfit and.
Certainly could.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for this gentleman? Then you have more people presenting tonight.
Yeah, Mr. James, would you like to speak on behalf of the state?
Sure.
Thanks.
Give him an Oscar.
Thank you.
Yeah, by the way.
I got a question.
Before he comes up, we got one more question, but.
So this is going back to Townsend.
Yes.
Have you guys ever made a transport to Erie or Pittsburgh?
We, we have not. We've actually had, uh, like a non-emergency where we got for an emergency. But it's our discretion whether we want to go to Erie or not. And normally we don't. We take them to the closest facility.
Right.
Because we're volunteers, we have six. And like I said, it hurts when we're, our volunteers are running down here. And it was just like two weeks ago, there was a call in our area for difficulty breathing directly across from my house. But we're down here at a nursing home running calls. So it's very frustrating for us.
Okay, so basically what we're talking about is emergicare, you run, you run the, the calls to Erie and Pittsburgh on a regular basis?
When when we need to. And that's not to say that.
I'm asking on a regular basis, not when you need to, on a regular basis.
I mean, I guess.
On your call?
It depends on what you consider to be a regular basis.
Well, how many of these out-of-service numbers are you getting transports?
Well, that's what I couldn't tell you right off the top of my head. You know, that's something I'd have to look at the times, the research, look at the cat shots and stuff to see what was going on at the time. Because, you know, the shoe's also on the other foot as well. There's a lot of times that we're taking calls for volunteer services that aren't able to staff as well. You know, this is, it's not just a volunteer problem, it's not just a paid problem, it's it's a, this is a very in-depth problem.
It's not the difference in volunteer versus fully staffed, like they can choose if they can transport any.
So. Is the, is the letter of the law is, is there is no differentiation between volunteer and career services. A service is either in service and available for calls, or they're out of service. And so by the letter of the law is, if you're in service, if you're called by the public safety answering point, you have to respond to that urgency. That's that's the letter of the law. We've had these discussions, particularly in Erie County, that if we're down to our last ambulance and we cover a lot of calls for fire departments in outer areas that we're not the primary provider for, do we have to send that ambulance? And historically, that answer has been yes. The only way you can avoid sending an ambulance to like your non-home location is by removing that municipality from your licensure. And so essentially, you know, that's, you know, sort of a double-edged sword. So if you removed, you know, the surrounding municipalities from, you know, like Titusville per se, you know, like if you removed Oil Creek or whoever, then I mean, that means you are not allowed to run or respond to calls in that municipality from an EMS perspective.
So when I asked earlier, I was asking for the sake of just educational, I was, I didn't mean to sound confrontational that, like, if you got a call in Harrisburg, you don't have to go to Harrisburg?
It's if it's not on your licensure, you don't necessarily have to go there.
So there's a reasonable, in other words, there's a reasonable expectation.
Correct.
If we took on, if we took on ambulance service for the city of Titusville to take care of our people here in town, and and eventually we went out to maybe High Town or Pleasantville, whatever, in a practical sense, we're not going to be expected to take care of Clary.
Well, I I'm just, I'm just asking, you know, if there's any, if you spent some time, just research on that. And I know that some township has Perry Highway hoes and some township puts, you know, eight hundred and fifty thousand plus dollars a year into them, and they want, you know, one point two, one point four next year, which is insane. But, you know, they have the call volume, I can count hundreds of calls a year into the city area that some townships cover, going all the way down towards Paralink, headed out towards down into Cambridge Springs and beyond, to pick up calls that there's nobody else that's available for. And if they could figure out a way to limit their call volume to just some township, they would. So.
So maybe we could get some clarification from, after this gentleman's done, or representative speaks on the discussion we've had, that if we, if we were to do it a certain way from our fire department, if we were to do it a certain way, then we're only at first picking up the calls that are, for lack of a better term, dropped.
So there's other, I mean, there's two different types of calls. My question, David, if you could, could you explain the difference between ALS and BLS call?
Sure. So an advanced life support call, that's what ALS is the acronym for, requires an EMT advanced or higher, is the preferred level of care. You know, advanced EMT, paramedic, where they can apply cardiac monitor, start IVs, do advanced airway techniques, certainly a lot more medications. BLS stands for basic life support, which is where EMT basic, the EMT basic level is who's can provide the care there. Those calls, and so specifically, so the nine-one-one center, to give you a little understanding how that works, the nine-one-one center does a call interrogation for every medical call, just like how they triage, you know, fires and law enforcement as well, and go through and determine the level of response that each of those calls require, you know, whether it's really a BLS level or an ALS level.
So I know that the city park, the township park, where you started a.
Yeah, co-program.
A co-program where their township's running BLS calls and having the local volunteer fire department or the Emergency Care running the ALS calls on the basis of availability, but, you know, that's taking care of a lot of the volume that is needed with personnel who are allowed to operate, but being less credentialed.
And so actually, those those programs there, and so about Perry Highway, Perry Highway actually almost runs double the calls in Mill Creek Township than they actually do in the city area. We've had the statistics to show that, because I've heard that a lot before too. But, you know, the reality is, is that most services are outrunning calls outside of their home area on a very regular and a very frequent basis. And we see that down here too. We see that in Erie, we see that in Warren, we see that everywhere. That's just how it is, because there's less availability of the volunteer agencies and of career agencies. And it comes back to, we're facing this recruitment or retention issue. And, you know, even when you can't get the people, is is how do you pay for it, you know? I don't like, I personally don't like that we have this issue in Titusville.
Sure.
You know, I don't like the, anywhere. But, you know, it's it's a matter of how do we, how do we fund it? You know, because if we weren't running those non-emergency calls right now down here, I'll tell you, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be able to provide what we're providing right now. That's, that's what's allowing us to provide the service that we are, even though it's not to everybody's satisfaction, it's not to my satisfaction, but it's what we can pay for, you know?
And it says proportion, so the third class city council wants your ability to raise taxes to half a mil. And so what's a half mil raise in Titusville?
Uh, seventeen thousand a year.
That's it?
Wouldn't be much money.
And you're not the only municipality in that boat, that's.
So you agree with the financial reality.
Right. Well, thank you for your dedication to what you guys do. And, you know, tonight, we're talking logistics and money, et cetera, but.
Sure.
We're thankful for what you do.
Well, like I said, I'm not here with an ask, you know, I was looking to allow this to be an educational and at least be a little bit dialogue. And I'd like to commend, you know, Neil has probably been one of the more interactive individuals from a municipality that's really tried to spearhead, trying to address the issue. It's it's challenging trying to engage municipalities to try to come up with a solution. So I'd like to just commend Neil for, you know, putting the work that he does into this, so.
Yes. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Very much.
So Dave.
Hey.
Hi, I'm pretty impressed with you.
Oh, thank you. Good evening. Oh, am I still invited? Just making sure. My name is Lee James, and I currently serve as State Representative for District sixty-four, which as of this evening includes all Benango County and five townships in the Northeast Butler. If all goes well next Tuesday and I'm re-elected for my sixth two-year term, those boundaries change. I will lose the five townships in Butler and pick up Titusville and the four townships and all the municipalities within surrounding Titusville in Crawford County. So Neil was nice enough to invite me up here. And fortunately, the notes that I have, which will be brief, have, they're not the same as what he just talked about. So this is a bit of new information. I tried to imagine if I were sitting in the office, what I would want to hear. And that might be more along the lines of what the heck is the legislature doing to help us out with this crisis? Yeah, so ten years ago, I got on board and I joined the Veterans Affairs and Emergency Preparedness Committee. And so I've been listening to some of the problems that the fire departments and the police departments have in the EM. But in the beginning, it wasn't a problem, or at least I didn't hear about the problem for the emergency medical folks. What I did hear was, when I was a bit of lads, there were something like three hundred thousand volunteer fire department personnel in Pennsylvania, and most, somewhere around eighty-five to ninety percent of that have gone away. I guess kids are not following in their father's footsteps all the time. But there is recognition of the EMS problem. Many of the House members and probably some of the senators too have served as firemen or still do and as emergency medical techs. So it's not gone unnoticed, but it hasn't been seriously looked into until about the beginning of two thousand twenty-two. The Policy Committee has held hearings all over the state. You may not have seen anything about that. But what I have read about their findings is everything that Dave just told you. The problems are not unique in Northwestern Pennsylvania. They are all over the Commonwealth and literally all over the United States. I I would like to share three pieces of information, just three, unless you want to get into specific questions, which I think you'll find is worth listening to. The last budget, which we just finished up at the end of June this year, which came in at about forty-four billion dollars, quite a few dollars. Let's see, the increased reimbursement rates for both the ALS and the BLS. ALS goes to four hundred dollars, and BLS goes to three hundred dollars per trip. These rates take place beginning in two thousand twenty-three, so two months from now. In addition to that, the EMS, let's see here, the agency's also increased from two to four dollars for all load miles over twenty miles. And that also takes effect January twenty twenty-three.
You said from two to four?
Correct.
Over twenty?
Over twenty, yes, I'm sorry. Right. Act ten of two thousand twenty-two, which was a Senate bill from Senator Stefano, allocates at one time twenty-five million dollar federal rescue plan dollar for disaster relief. I reinforced my comment, it's a one-time relief. These are federal dollars that won't be coming back. But they're headed for emergency, emergency medical services, COVID grant program, recovery grant program. And then the third item I wanted to share with you is turned into Act seventy-four of two thousand twenty-two. It was sponsored by House Member Frank Ferry, who currently is a fire captain down in Southeast. So he knows his business. And there are eight different line items in that one. And the dollar amount that is going to be provided beginning next year is about five and a half million. The source of those funds are not new taxes, but they will come from the twelve percent tax on fireworks. The hope is that that's five and a half million dollars, if not in perpetuity, at least for a number of years, until we can get our arms around the problem. So I can give you a few more specifics, but I think that kind of covers what you might like to know. And we're not done. There'll be more hearings and hopefully more ideas coming forward. And if you have, you know, you you guys are going to go into a huddle and try to figure out what to do for Titusville. It's a great idea, Jared, you know, because there are other people who will appreciate hearing what you're doing and maybe work it into their own situations.
Well, first off, thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule to come here.
My wife's mad at you, by the way.
Fine.
Well, she, she wants me home.
Okay. It's not gonna call my phone.
I'm kidding.
Anyway, so can you give us just a couple hints or specifics on how that money comes back to a local municipality to help with this issue?
Well, five and a half million spread over, what are they, twenty-six hundred municipalities and more than that of very, variety of volunteer fire departments. You're going to have to be on top of the application process. I don't have an application here at this point. I imagine they're, they're probably ready, but right now, there are other issues that everybody's worried about down there, such as who our new governor is going to be. But Neil or someone, whoever's assigned to that, will want to stay right on top of it. So the application with the, you know, here's, here's our problem, here's what we need, can help us out. Some of the, some of the rewards, or awards, not rewards, are anticipated to be around thirty-seven thousand dollars in a municipality. It could be less, it depends again on your need. But that's kind of the target amount. This is year one.
Sure.
You know, so if we can get better next year, it might not, I don't know.
If we have an aggressive rep, that's, right, your community could help too.
I did want to, I'm sorry, your new young man left, your peacekeeper, but I did want to tell him that what, what he just raised his right hand and swore to is the same thing as we do in the legislature. I don't know if he knows, but obviously, some of you do. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
I'm sure he's excited anyway.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just have a question that that applies more to the, kind of the surrounding. What is the discussion at the legislative level at the state that, you know, we are losing volunteers in our fire departments and our ambulance services, and so many smaller communities are, they're just based on volunteer? You know, what what happens when you have a community that can't gather enough to have a fire truck? And like, what's the discussion at the state about how to help those communities further, you know, to to do something when the volunteers aren't volunteering to to continue in their promised steps?
I think you're asking what ideas are coming from.
Yes, I am.
Ideas are not solutions necessarily, but they're at least talking points and a place to start. One of my favorites is a grant to cover the cost of turnout gear for a new firefighter. I'll get around to the cops. A new firefighter who is willing to do this on a volunteer basis. That may or may not include paid, uh, paid firefighter.
Okay.
Okay. There are grants included in that five point five million that I mentioned. There are grants for technology, training, things of that. That's real, although I don't know how far five and a half million dollars is going to be stretched. So there are some lightweight solutions, but I don't, I don't, how you, where are the young people? I don't know.
And I think, you know, it's not just that, volunteers are struggling, but this is, this is a real dilemma.
Yes, it is.
Because how do you provide the safety that the law is requiring, that we provide, when you don't have anybody to provide it? I guess it's a question.
If Luke Rio is having a heart attack at his end of this district, and I break my leg at the other end, I want, I want service, you know?
Right.
Right now, I might not get it for hours.
What are the annual training requirements like for a volunteer?
I think it's a hundred and eighty hours.
It's a hundred and eighty hours a year training? So isn't that cutting down the amount of people that are going to give up their three weeks vacation a year to go train?
I would agree with that. I agree with you.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Kind of what?
I think so. It's only one time, though.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And then what is renewed, what is every year?
It's just to keep up on your, you know, your certs and everything, your credits.
Yeah, twenty hours.
It's really not bad. It's like eighteen for a three-year period.
But even like Sam said, even initially, that's, that pays a lot.
But didn't also the, the training requirements recently change for EMTs and paramedics? Did they increase the training requirements for EMTs and paramedics?
Yeah, EMTs is like four months and paramedics is like a year, right?
Yeah, it's, there's, there's no hourly requirement. It goes off of content, you know, what's covered in that time period. But EMTs can work for three or four months, paramedic is about a year.
So basically, experience, is that excessive?
No, that's not excessive.
And here's why. When this guy or a girl gets there, you want them to know what he's doing.
Oh, I think you're right. I get it.
Very much.
But what about the volunteer perspective?
I was gonna say, there have been a number of times which we're running into now. And the nice thing is, right now, an EMT can do so much more than we could ever do before. So we may go to a chest pain, we will not wait on ALS, we go right to the hospital, because we can't wait. Because like, you know, Dave had mentioned, you know, we might be waiting for a community to come for thirty minutes. If we take a call down here, down to Towers, we're not waiting, we're going.
So you're saying, I might be stepping in, but you're saying, this breaks clarification to some of my notes. You're saying they had the ALS and what's the other one?
ALS.
Okay, so you're saying if our local fire department, if we were, if you have our own ambulance. ambulance and they were all qualified, are they qualified in the, right? BMS, not ALS. But if they got there and there was an ALS call, they could still take that person to the hospital? They don't have to wait?
Yeah, I would not stay and play.
Okay.
I would let them go. That's, that's what I would do. I don't, I don't sit there and wait.
Okay. Thank you.
Was there, is there any conversation about, I've always wondered about taking on other models in other states regarding how that's provided? And, and I've heard people talking about, you know, limiting the geographic areas in which you're obligated to provide mutually, providing the essential resources in creation of fire emergency service authorities for which all the municipalities within that geographic area are required to join, fund things. I mean, is there any conversation about real structural change to the system? Just recognizing that maybe what we have has aged out and we need something new?
Here's the thought, and this probably refers more to your police departments, but a regional concept. It might work for fire departments too, I don't know. We're doing that in Southern Benango County now, where there's three gentlemen in a regional force that cover most of the southern supply as opposed to the municipalities having each of their own departments. That takes some cooperation, obviously. There's talk of a fire tax, but as Dave correctly stated, nobody wants a new tax. I mean, the governor went down in flames twice trying to hit us up for twenty-five dollars a head per, per year for state police. No one would have it. I didn't consider that to be a particularly difficult hurdle to jump. You know, so that's one thing in any case. And I, and I know we need to do more work. I'm with you on that.
Well, not sufficient is easy.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you again.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. May I be excused at this point?
Yes, sir. I don't wish to let you out, or.
I will.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Love you guys. You're all right.
Neil, you have something else?
Joe, do you have any comments or any, anything you'd like to add or share?
Sure, I can.
I appreciate that politician with breadth, that is, that's amazing. Probably the most important thing we did tonight and will do tonight is to honor Tim. Just want to say congratulations. That's, that's fantastic.
Appreciate it.
He's the real deal. So again, counsel, you know, you know my recommendation to you. I feel like probably a hybrid approach, some sort of, it's actually a cooperative type of approach with emergic care would be the best step. I mean, I heard Dave's proposal, clearly we would be adding a person and they would be adding a person. I think you're, you're at four or five hundred thousand dollars for that pretty quickly. I would recommend that we pursue an ambulance. I want to read you an excerpt just real quickly from Fire Chief Warren. You guys are all aware of what's happening. Warren, I know you're aware of what's happening in Meadville. Different communities approaching the same problem, different thing. But he just said in the first paragraph, he, he and I were talking, and he said, "I believe the best way to ensure the best care for our citizens is by taking the bull from the horns and providing the service ourselves. When we run, when you run the show, you control the show." I actually agree with him. I think the best bet at this point is for us to be able to provide that, that service. Again, have to stress, we talked a lot about, you know, ALS, BLS, we talked about trips to, you know, Titusville Hospital. One of the big issues we have is not being able to get a patient bypass Titusville Hospital to a waiting helicopter. We've had that issue several times. This is a traumatic event, motor vehicle accident, and we do not have the capacity to, to take a person to the helicopter. Having an ambulance that we control, that we are able to put in service at that time and transport a person to a waiting helicopter meets the highest threshold, in my opinion, as far as emergent care. Again, you could say, well, that's an ALS call. We are not going to, we're going to go stabilize that person to our skill set and move forward. As Dave mentioned, advanced EMT, I believe, is on the horizon for all of us. We have EMTs now. I believe that that's going to be the future for our department is a program where our guys would move into an advanced EMT scenario. I don't think you can snap your fingers and do that overnight. I'm not recommending that we try to get an ambulance and take over primary. I don't think Dave's going to care because those calls are, are being surrendered right now to Townville and to Centerville. So if you want to know, again, a way to alleviate the problem with overtaxing the volunteers is we can stop having them come to the city of Titusville with the regular that they do.
It helps them.
It does. Because Townville doesn't, isn't going to have to come to Titusville as much. Centerville's not coming, Bloomfield's not coming, Spartansburg's not coming. Now, community is probably, if there's an absence of an ALS provider, community is going to be dispatched as an ALS. The length of time it would take them to get here, typically they get turned around. They don't normally make it all the way to Titusville for ALS even before Centerville can answer a call, come to town and take them, and certainly the same with Townville. So I think that's the best model. I think we have preliminary approval to keep that ambulance in reserve status. Now, again, I'm not going to stand here and tell you, I know every nuance and caveat of, of different laws and how they interact. I respect him a great deal. I'm sure he will dig into, dig into that forest, but an ambulance in reserve status provides us the capability to control it and to put it in service when we need it. If emergic care's model provides us for having one person anyways, that, per what I discussed with you guys, meets that first half of the law. And I think we can do it for a lot less.
So part of the discussion that we can expand on a little bit here tonight is, in fact, even though we've had this discussion with you at two or three public meetings, there were our budget sessions where we did have them on the public there. So maybe if anybody from counsel wants to go over some of those points or bring them up now that we're live and it'll be on the record.
Sure.
Tonight and, or, or in our newspapers here as well. Any questions that you would like him to address, anybody on counsel, that we discussed in our business, our budget sessions?
Well, if, if we decide to go this route, I'd like to see a plan drawn up, black and white, I mean, go through the scenarios, whatever you want to do, but we need a plan, not just a fly-by-night plan, we need a plan to go by, a structured plan.
Sam?
No, I just said, you know, as we had conversations and some of these stories that these near misses, that the community has experienced with this, you know, if you do the thousand times a year, it's out of service in the average of eight, I mean, four hours per, that's four thousand divided by twenty-four, that's one-third of the year, that's a hundred and sixty-six days of coverage when missing a year for an ambulance in town. So, I mean, this is, we're, we're rolling the dice of not implementing this immediately. We're rolling the dice that somebody is going to die because of this.
And what was the story you shared with us about a young lady that had a severe head injury that could?
Oh, Danny, that's a good story, actually, it's a success, but a young girl in town, I'm not going to use her last name, but she's just a sweetheart of a girl. She took a fall down a set of steps. Typically, young children just do not become perilously ill for no reason. And this, this young girl did, there was no ambulance available at the time. Our crews were split and another EMS call, Centerville was in the city that they'd already picked up a patient from Billy Brown. We got the second call, shout out to my Lieutenant Jimmy Brown, who realized that community had been dispatched to the first call and turned around and was able to reach out to Benango County, I believe, Rafferty or Crawford.
Crawford.
Through, got ahold of them, turned them back around, was able to bring them back to the city. We're so thankful. We were able to load her up, get her to a waiting helicopter, flew her to Children's. It was a very serious condition. She is not permitted to crunch ice for a year, which tells you how close of a call that was. We are so thankful to have her back and to see her smile on the face when we drive through. And again, I'm, I'm not going to compare numbers and say, well, how many times and how many calls, because that's the number of times that lightning struck and you just don't know. I agree with Sam. I think the, the overall issue is the amount of time that there, that there isn't an ambulance available. That, to me, is the only thing that we really should be focusing on. It isn't how many times did that turn into the worst-case scenarios? At that point here, we're literally just bargaining with people's lives and I don't think that's a fair assessment. I think you just need to say, if we, if we own it, we control it. And I think that is the best model. Just because, again, this is live, I can review my recommendation to counsel briefly.
Yes.
I recommend that we add, we move our part-time relief drivers into a full-time schedule, but maintain their part-time status.
Okay.
That allows us to maintain our ability to apply for a safer grant. I think that's something we should do. It's a three-year revenue stream, it's tiered like we talked about. Right on the first page at Safer Grant, it states, "This is for hiring new firefighters or change of status from part-time to full-time." I, I probably wouldn't make a part-time or full-time appointment until you saw if you were eligible for that. If that comes through, I would make that a permanent adjustment and move those people to a full-time position, purchase an ambulance. And as far as your black and white plan, that ambulance would be in-station, managed by us. We would have a lot of different, so the SOGs for it. If emergic care was in town and we had a normal call, like we, you were, let's say it's just an ALS call, Matt, you're on the call. If we have three people, we have the ability to roll two people in a QRS fashion like we do right now.
Yes.
And roll it in a pickup truck instead of a fire engine. Another thing that I've stressed is the amount of calls that those engines go on per year is, it's a real dollar bill. We've talked about maintenance, we've talked about the fact that those calls, the engine is running on, like, I can give you real quick, I just don't want to take up too much time, year-to-date, worth six hundred and seventy-six calls. Four hundred and eighty-nine of the calls year-to-date would have been something that would have required an ambulance. That includes, those are not all transportables. I don't want you to get a health or a transport for an eight. Those are situations where an ambulance, and those, many of those were covered by emergic care, some were covered by Townville. They would include a motor vehicle accident, extricating somebody and having an ambulance right there. We had a, we had a bad motor vehicle accident, you guys are well aware of this, in town a number of weeks ago, and it was all hands on deck to get the patients transported. But the person who caused the accident was in his vehicle for forty-five minutes before transport was available for him. That's a long time to have a person in a vehicle. And that's too long, in my opinion. One person was transported immediately to helicopter and then another person was transported to Titusville Hospital, another person was eventually transported. Again, it's, it's just something, it's another capability that we would be able to provide.
So with all the fine people that we have here tonight and all the things we've heard from Dave about us finding a solution, kind of briefly tie in how your solution actually helps the whole thing. It's not, we're not competition.
No. So at this point, my, the reason I said tape, I don't think he's going to mind it, is emergic care running the model that he's running right now, which works for them, is surrendering calls to other agencies. At that point, that just becomes a cost of doing business to him. Those other agencies are where a lot of the wait times come in, so forth and so on. If we have the capacity to provide the other agency response, it alleviates the need to call Townville, Centerville, Spartansburg and draw on their communities to send an ambulance to Titusville to take care of our people.
Well, because then they're out of service in their own communities when they're here.
Absolutely.
So it's just a kind of your problem.
So that is, we're basically adding a component to the mix. It isn't changing how emergic care is operating currently. They can continue to operate the way they're right now. I believe it's going to show, it's going to develop into less wait times.
But the other positive of adding that person up to full-time on staff is, again, tell about when you arrive at a structured, if we didn't have emergencies going on, you have a third person, what does that mean?
And again, I could, that's probably one of the, you know, one of the main reasons that I would be most excited about is, right now, when we arrive at a structured fire with a two-man staff, and there's two guys on shift, we gear up, we set the truck, we pull the handle, set the truck, and two guys go into that call. We call it dead man, and you dead man the pump for a length of time until people can arrive on scene. I'm, I'm going to tell you one true story. Troy and I were shift partners. We had a fire in Superior Street. We, the fire was, was heavy involvement when we got there. We started the pump, Troy and I made entry into the front foyer, kind of this hallway of this thing, and the porch collapsed, but it pivoted from the roof and collapsed and pinned us inside the building and, and pinched the hose off. So we had no water flow, we had no escape out the way we came, and we were completely, and there was no one outside. There was no other Titusville Fire Department member outside. We had, one of our guys was off on cancer leave at some point showed up and a police officer. Again, the issue is there's no one outside even to necessarily cover radio traffic to start conveying the, the help that we need. Troy and I were fine. We found another way out of the building. We issued a mayday like we're supposed to on the radio to advise everybody we had a problem. We found our way out. My issue is that is not a perfect solution. You have two guys inside and no one outside. The addition of one extra person allows the officer on the shift to maintain radio communications for incoming units, which sets the call up correctly. He's, he's advising other units on what their job is. He's also watching that pump to make sure we don't have a mechanical failure, a hose failure, any sort of failure that would affect those guys inside. If he sees something, a change in conditions, wind-driven fire, anything like that, he's able to radio that crew and advise them, "I don't like the way this is set up, I want you to back out." All of those things are that even if one additional person outside brings enormous amount of safety, and that's, again, very near and dear to my heart. I try not to harp on that too much because you're not going to see a reciprocal dollar amount for that. It's just peace of mind to do the job the way I think we should be doing it.
Oh, and that, to me, that bids to equality of life for all of our citizens.
Absolutely.
I think, I think Sam has figures in front of him because at the last meeting we were at, trying to kind of figure out if we were to implement something like this, we're talking about, what, about quarter million or more than a quarter million?
The leftover?
You know, for, no, for us to implement this program.
Yeah.
For the first year. Total, you know, with all the different things involved in it, which, which, to me, I, I think, selling me on it is the fact that we're, for lack of a better term, yes, some people might think we're putting our toes in the water and we should go all in and maybe, and that's a discussion we can have up here, but this provides something to the citizens and the community immediately that we don't have right now.
And it is a model, to speak to Sarah's point earlier, I have always been an advocate of what happens when there's no volunteers, you've got to pay them. Here's the thing, at the times of expecting people to put that much time and effort and do that in order to not be compensated, I absolutely believe if you want good help, you have to pay them. So believing in that model and seeing what's happening in the communities around us, I think we need to double down on what we have that we can do, which is we have the manpower that are already running these calls. Our guys are already responding to these calls in the city.
With a full-blown fire truck?
Yeah, with a fire truck. Obviously, this would give us the ability to respond with, with a smaller loaded truck for QRS to assist them if it's something that they're in service for. If they're out of service, it allows us to take that three-man crew, keep a fire personnel in service and respond with an ambulance. And we can, again, we can make changes in how to make decisions on how we're going to do that. We also have, again, the way our system is designed with the Minutemen, if at some point you say, well, you're going to have to run an emergent call to Pleasantville, some little girls are going to go to a birthday party and eat a cupcake with peanuts in it, we also have the ability to call back our staff, our off-duty staff. So in the event that there wasn't, we could save a life and we had to respond to a call outside the city, we can call back and have fire coverage for those guys that are responding to that call. It's not like, oh, it leaves the city completely, now, obviously, we, we only have one ambulance, but it's, it leaves us in a position to provide fire safety and emergency services, which would be, so we also have that built in. I don't know what those numbers will look like depending on the call, and it may be very hard to, to figure out what that would look like.
Okay.
But we have the capability to scale up if we need to. Right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Neil, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this issue?
Bill, do you have anything else to add? No, not really, I think.
Tell us again, who you are and where you're from.
Yes, yes. Bill Taylor, I'm an officer of Townville Ambulance, soon to be chief of the ambulance.
Congratulations.
And appreciate your time. Neil, thanks for inviting me. I know that. And appreciate your time, Neil, thanks for inviting me, I know that you, Dave, myself, we're all on that kind of regional task force here, but yeah, we only have six volunteers to run.
What did you used to have, ten years ago?
Twenty-five, thirty, yeah. And nobody wants to do it anymore, Dave hit it on the head, you know, they either want to stay home and play video games, or they don't want to get out and volunteer. I mean, when I grew up, you volunteered for everything.
Right.
Whether it was church or you name it, we did it because we wanted to. Nobody wants to volunteer anymore. And what we're running into is, we're going to burn our people out, these kids that graduate, or I should say graduated from EMT class, they're all twenty-four, twenty-two, they're all in their thirties as families now. So now, it's hard for them because they're working at any given time during the day. We're lucky to have a crew, and they talk about the fire department, we're lucky to have two or three people show up on the structured fire. So it is really hard, and that's why I say, when we get drawn down here, we're leaving ourselves open for our residents, so. So that's, that's really what I want to touch base with. And I do, I do like the idea, I know there's been discussion about the ambulance here, and it would affect Emergencare in any way financially, it's just going to help us. So I really like the idea.
Okay, so if we can get you up there to vote and you're good?
Yeah.
If we can get you up here to vote, you're good?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Any questions for him to answer?
I don't think so.
Well, thank you so much for your
Thank you.
Thank you for the conversation.
Absolutely.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, well, now we come to the public input time of the meeting, unless there was something else you needed to share with us about this, Neil? Five-minute time limit for individual speaker, would anybody like to talk about anything else besides what we've had tonight or what we had tonight? Don't all jump up at once. Tim, did you have a speech prepared or anything?
Yeah, let me get to the right page.
And on behalf of council, again, like Joe said, congratulations for this award you got tonight, Tim, we're, we're blessed with good people, but it's, but again, it's as good as it is when you need an ambulance, you need an ambulance, you know, that's why we had this long discussion tonight, so. If there's no comments from the audience, I'll start with our junior councilman, or any comments after listening to all this tonight?
I want to commend all of the emergency group staff officers, like people who are here tonight, hearing this issue is very close to me, because my brother is a volunteer firefighter, so hearing that is, that issue is very hard. And we also had a state input meeting yesterday, and we discussed at the Ed Meyer complex, somebody brought up that they wanted to fix soccer field down there for the high school practices and for rec stocker as well, because it has a lot of holes
Okay.
In it, and then there's a definite want for another equipment storage facility, and there was a recommendation for a drive-in theater, but
Analogic sized hole.
And also pavilions for removing or other practice.
Wow. And Neil, you can address a little bit that meeting we had last week, one of the things on our agenda is restoring and having a better equipment, so.
Yeah, so we met, and then last Friday, it was a bunch of us, Pashik, who was our engineer, that's going to be handling some of the projects down at Ed Meyer next year in the spring, was there, we had baseball coaches there, Lou was there on behalf of soccer, and obviously using the facility as well, we thought it was very important to have those folks there and use the field. Certainly, it's easy for us to say this is what we want, but they're the ones that use it and they should have input. Again, we discussed a new building, we discussed dugouts down at the complex as well, we discussed possibly dugouts being a little bit larger, being able to house some of the equipment for the baseball teams, which would ease up space in the current building, so maybe not a new building, but maybe redesigning that building and upgrading it, which provide more space, so I think we could accomplish that as well. We also, we also talked about pickleball courts, that seems to be an up-and-coming sport, very popular, we have a perfect area down there for that, you'll have tennis courts. Again, so we did not discuss the drive-in movie theater.
But did we not discuss some repairs to some of the soccer fields?
We did, so we discussed the soccer fields, or part of our CEG project, it wasn't set out that we were going to improve the soccer fields, but after discussion with many of the folks that were there, we got extra dirt and things that were left over from Carter Field, the school district was there as well, and we discussed possibly utilizing that dirt and getting rid of some of those holes and evening out some of the soccer fields. So again, that's something that could be accomplished.
Thank you, is that?
Yeah, that's
Good, thank you, that was very good. And so for council, we'll start with you, Bill, tonight.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for showing up this evening, and Tim, congratulations, you guys do a heck of a job, and we're proud to have you on board, believe me, the whole police department in Titusville, that's, you keep us going, we appreciate it, thank you. We've got a lot of things to think over as a council, and the main thing to think about is the people in Titusville, the comfortability they have, knowing what they have and what they expect. We've got a lot of elderly people in this town, they expect more than what we, what we're doing, and let's face it, nobody's getting any younger, and this town is, we've seen that, we can see it as every day goes by. It's very important that we take our time and realize what we have and how to get there. We need to, we need a budget, we're looking at a budget, and it's not what I want or what I expect, but it is, it's manageable, there's pros and cons on everything. But as a council, we have to look out for the city and the people in this city, not for ourselves, but everybody in this city. So with that in mind, I hope everybody out there says a prayer that we can do this and keep everybody on council in your prayers, I would really appreciate it, thank you.
Sam?
Thank you for everyone who showed up, we appreciate it. Congratulations to Mr. Chicorelli on being someone's new officer, Tim, thank you for all you do as well. This EMS issue is something that, you know, we're personally losing sleep over, rolling through, trying to find a solution that's going to work. This is a big deal, and, you know, I think that we've got a happily decent plan, thanks to Joe and everything he's doing over there, so I think we're really moving forward on this, make this work. Now, just wanted to check out your checkbook and get it paid for.
I'll do that. Hello? Okay, definitely.
So I also want to say congratulations to the new officer, it's nice to see a local, a local officer, so, you know, we have hired some officers that have moved on, and that happens in every field, of course, but it's nice to see someone, young person who is local and wants to stay local, and so that's always a plus. And it's nice to see investment in the community, so I know that a lot of times people say, I do really need another fast food restaurant, you know, we need, we need bigger restaurants, and we do, and I don't disagree with that, but we need investment, and so if, you know, I'm glad to see a property that's been sitting vacant for quite a long time is now maybe redeveloped into something, and it's going to change the look of that corner, and that's certainly a plus. You know, we talk about the issue with volunteers and not getting volunteers, so it's nice to see students that want to be on council and that are running meetings, you know, at school and getting input from other students who now have a voice in what's happening, and that's a start to getting people to volunteer, to have that voice. And here's the thing, we all have a voice, next week, we need to get out and vote, right? So, you know, we want to see change, or you want to see good things that are happening continue, then we have to, we have to be part of that. And so I hope that those that are registered to do so get out and vote or already have through other means, and before our next meeting, town will change.
Yes.
So we'll be watching that as we begin, so I'm not sure I'm ready for, you know, short days, but we want to recover to do that, and then in that, be watching as it gets darker earlier for, you know, kids and pedestrians that are still out on the streets, so.
That's it?
That's what I have to make.
Okay. Wow, so it cut down a couple of my highlights, but again, I would like to say congratulations to Tim, and thank you for everybody that showed up tonight, because without collaboration, we're not going to get this accomplished. And certainly, one of the things that I'm proud of, and thank you to Neil for being here at the longest of anybody sitting here at the table, that we're coming up on almost three years, and one of the things we sought out to do was to have more open communication, to listen to our department heads, to listen to the needs of the community, and do everything we can to provide them, whether it's through grants, whether it's have to tweak water or tweak garbage or whatever, to provide people the best services possible. And I would like to really say that I've been involved in a lot of different management things in my life, but working with our department heads in town, they're all very excited about what they do, they're very knowledgeable, they all have different passions, but at the same time, they have a passion to provide our citizens with the best we can. And I look at this whole EMS thing, as Sam talked about, I appreciate what Emergencare does, and I appreciate what you're going to continue to do. We're not here to drive you out of the community, we appreciate you being here very much. We want to provide something to, I like the dual alibi of this, that not only we've been able to provide some to our citizens in the event of an emergency, but also we able to provide our fire department with something that they've asked for for a long time, and maybe in the past, the only answer they ever heard is, we don't have any money. Now we're trying to figure out a way to make it happen, and I'm very happy about that. I want to touch on, Sarah started to touch on, I mean, covered very well, just to remind everybody, because there's been a change since COVID and everything, that we all vote at the YMCA, correct?
Yes.
So all precincts vote at the YMCA, and I encourage people to exercise that freedom that we have, it's awesome to get out and vote if you haven't voted already. The time change you already touched on, but we also are having a time change and a day change, starting the first of December. We are changing our meeting times to Monday night, still the first and the third, Monday night at 6:30, so that we don't run until midnight when we have long meetings, and also provides people with some schedule issues. With that, again, thank you to everybody that was here, my hat's off, as Sarah touched on to our real officer, Chicorelli, it is, it is good to see a local person, and I know that he was quite patient, probably had other offers, but he expressed to Neil and I, when we were coming on the stream last week, we met him outside, that, that he was waiting for this because this is what he wanted, so like Sarah said, somebody that's probably going to spend his career here, he's not using this as a stepping stone, so. With that, unless anybody wants to run for a couple more hours, somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay. Call the row, please.
Ms. McCrayless?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hodgson?
Yes.
Mr. Crouch?
Before I say yes, I would just like to say thank you for your comments tonight, it's nice to see your excitement being as our junior, your junior councilperson, and I say yes. Thank you, meaning adjourn.